Please.
How did that go?
I noticed it.
On Wednesday seventeen, you don't, you don't know where you go down and you turn, you don't do that. Nobody stops.
That's what I was wondering, yeah.
He was.
No.
When the.
Rule used to do it.
That green makes a big difference.
Fourth day, you know, third day of a holiday, like, why they put it there? I was surprised.
Yeah.
So did the, the town candidates also came, right?
Yeah.
And so there should have been.
All this meeting, order. All rise with the.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America in two republics for which it stands one nation, indivisible, in the soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Any judgment to the gentleman?
There.
Seeing none. Public comment. Is there any public comment tonight from anyone? Only one in the room is moving, so.
Well.
You can go first. It's your turn.
Seeing none. Okay. Prove a minutes please.
Like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the school board meeting September twelve, September twenty six, two thousand twenty three, barring any errors or any errors or omissions.
Get a motion and a second, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion for paper one, Kevin Drayman.
I move to direct the superintendent schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party listed herein. The subset against each name containing school payroll warrant, P I twenty four dash six dash two in the amount of four hundred eighty six dollars and thirty cents. P I dash twenty four dash six dash three in the amount of one thousand two hundred forty nine dollars and fifteen cents. And P I twenty four dash sixty dash two in the amount of one hundred four dollars and seventy seven cents on September fourteenth, twenty twenty three. P I twenty four dash seven in the amount of one hundred and thirty one thousand, two hundred twenty eight dollars and ninety nine cents. And P I twenty four dash seventy in the amount of seventy one thousand, four hundred twenty five dollars and thirty three cents on September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. And P I twenty four dash eight in the amount of one hundred and thirty one thousand, nine hundred fifty seven dollars and seventy nine cents. And P I twenty four dash eight D in the amount of seventy one thousand, seventy nine dollars and twenty seven cents on October twelfth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Need discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Five oh. Paper one.
Cheryl.
But motion to direct the superintendent schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party listed here, listed herein. The subset against each name contained in the school payable warrant. S A twenty four dash four student accounts in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and eighty six dollars and fifty five cents. A P twenty four dash nine in the amount of thirty two thousand, four hundred and fifty six dollars and five cents. And A P twenty four ten in the amount of a hundred and forty one thousand, ninety seven dollars and eleven cents on September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. And A P twenty three fifty two in the amount of nine hundred eighty dollars and seventy seven cents. Physical year twenty three. S A twenty four dash five student accounts in the amount of three hundred and sixty three dollars and eight cents. And A P twenty four dash eleven in the amount of ninety four thousand, nine hundred and fifty nine dollars and twenty eight cents on October twelfth, twenty twenty three.
In the rural area up there. Yeah, three hundred and sixty three, six hundred and thirty six.
Sorry. Can't correct it, six thirty six.
There you go.
Oh, eight.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
This is a quick one.
Check.
I see, we're still seeing some F Y twenty threes, are those gonna end soon?
Yeah, um, this one particularly for nine eighty seventy seven was due to errors in calculations of the M E A dues in early twenty two, twenty three school year. An incorrect amount of payroll deductions were taken from many employees. Rhonda Casey found the error and has since corrected it. Affected employees were notified, and yes, there's still maybe a few additional expenses that might have been there.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Five oh, thank you. Motion for the junior class.
Motion to see if the board will approve Haley Aldridge as a junior class school board student representative.
Second.
Any discussion? Somebody like fellows a little bit on, on the.
Uh, yes, please, that. Um, so Haley is a junior this year. Um, she is a very active within her class. Uh, you go to a junior class fundraiser and Haley's there and she's usually the one giving directions. Uh, she will not be intimidated to speak up, to tell you guys about all of the stuff going on within the school, within the classes. Uh, she'll be very knowledgeable, I think she's going to be as prominent addition to the board.
Maybe she can just slide it over here.
She might.
We, yeah, that's great.
You're welcome.
Any other? Questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Five oh. Adoption of policy.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt, uh, following revised policies. Uh, E D E F D school lunch charging policy. Uh, I J N D B student computer internet use, internet safety. I J N B, uh, D B dash R student computer internet use rules. I J N D B dash E student computer internet use and acknowledgement forms.
Any discussion?
I just have a question. I think I asked everything, I think it's still saying, what if people can't afford this, is this, is this something often, they're not going without?
Yes, all of our students receive a premium, all of our students. So the only thing that, um, they might have to pay for if they want something off the, out of the car, and that of course is by their own choice, yeah. And I'd remind everybody, I think we say this every time, that these are led by M S M A, so, you know, other than making a slight change, which the policy committee would have had, um, opportunity to do, then these have not changed since you saw them.
Do we know how long the state is gonna fund lunches or?
I haven't heard that, I had, in some of this other stuff that I was gonna talk about, I was gonna tell you that the, um, the, last year, remember, you had to have a communal, um, meal program, congregant meal program? They're actually are changing some of that because there's more, um, people participating in some virtual learning and some like snow days or power days, things like that. So that's a new thing that, um, is still coming up, and what happens is if we have like a loss of power day, we do a virtual day, um, something like that, then we can apply for a waiver after the fact. Where last time, we kind of got caught up in the fact that we had to have meals already at home, or no of those delicious meals Mia put together, well, those had to already be home, and so they're changing some of that guideline.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Five oh. Discussion of resolutions for the fall conference.
Yeah.
Well, I.
Kevin, if you wanna take over?
Well, I'm just a little bit, I sit in on a meeting, uh, with a rustic in Piscatawba County with the state going through these. The, uh, the first part you see, uh, the all deletions, and I, I'm of the mind, the less, the less you have in some of these policies, the better off, uh, we are. The less restrictions and it's more, it gives us more, uh, freedom as a school board. Uh, some of the changes, uh, that I, I thought were good. Was, uh, some of the teacher preparation programs, that's on, uh, well, doesn't give a page number, but, and professional development. Uh, I know one of them stressed, uh. And with the troubles we had recently with COVID and stuff, that, uh, a lot of behavioral issues and things like that, where students were affected, and they were gonna try to do some, uh, either in school training or state training. Uh, with new teachers, but in school with, uh, already teachers, so they could look at that and see some of the problems.
So that, that's under, uh, two V three A, uh, professional development?
Yes.
So you're recommending that we agree with that?
Yes, I mean, you asked if I had any question, but these are the ones I, that stuck out to me.
Yeah.
Uh, to, uh, to be three A and plus, uh, the, uh, to be three D, what's the teacher preparation, uh, which I thought were, were. Makes, made good, made good sense, and it talks about, uh, identification of students who have behavioral health substitutes, mental, you know, uh, that all makes perfectly good sense. If you, uh. Nonpartisan school board members, uh, there was quite of a discussion on that, uh, in, in Milona, that we, uh, we don't run as Republicans or Democrats, I don't. Uh, we always run, we do what's in the best interest of the students. Uh, but there was some discussion about, I mean, I, uh, I have a party affiliation, I, I don't leave that at the door, but I mean, still, it's not. The best for the students in what's in my interest.
Right.
And I think that's reflected a lot by the party I belong to, uh, but I thought that, that was all right, that was good.
And, and that's what the intent of the plan.
That's the way I, that's the way I read it, what's in the best interest of the students in the district.
Right, right.
Uh. I did have a question, uh. On, uh. Parental guidance, engagement, and education of their children, and it was pretty much, uh, the last sentence, it says, the M, M S B A also believes the parental guiding opportunities. For involvement in the education of their children should not inhibit the education of other children. Uh, as a parent or a group of parents who are interested in things going on in the school, it's gonna affect everybody's children, so I, I didn't know how that would really work. You know, if I get up and I say, well, I don't think this is right in the school, well, then I'm inhibiting your right as a parent.
Right.
And if you get up and say, well, I do think it's right, you're inhibiting my right as a parent, so I thought it was kind of a.
I'm kind of guessing that that sentence is more broadly thinking like of the behavior of myself going in as a parent is like disruptive to the learning of the students. That, that might be more, that's how I interpreted it, I should say.
I think there's several ways you can, and that's one of the discussions we had, was there were several ways to interpret it, and, uh, but I mean, I, that's one I had a question on.
Yeah.
Uh.
Is it getting resolved as?
Not really, not really, it just kind of went round and round and until everybody got tired listening to it.
So when you go to vote, will there be more conversation?
I would, I would, I hold it, district, he only would have two districts. So I'm assuming there's gonna be other districts that'll pick up on this too.
So maybe through that conversation, you'll understand better the nuances of what that's intended to.
Yes, I, I think, I hope I do, uh, but I. I, I know tonight I'm gonna need some, I think this is the night you give me some direction on how we're gonna vote as, vote as a board, cuz that's how we vote.
Right, right.
And then, uh, state funding, uh, state funding to support students' mental and health behavior, uh, that's the very, uh. That, that, I mean, they, they were all pretty, they were all good, but I mean, the ones I mentioned, they come and gone were the ones that, it was a problem, yeah.
I think my concern with the last one is that it indicates that it will be, um, mu- money will be. Sub, you know, supplemented through the EPS formula so that you will, district will have the money to do these things, and I would like wonder about that, and I know that these professionals are very expensive for that. So, I mean, if we're adding another layer of money, I guess my thought would be, where's it coming from? You know, how dedicated is the state to actually providing that?
And to get, to go back on another one too, on, uh, to be one G, is create technical educational opportunities, they deleted, uh. They deleted the section that says a resolution calls for the state to fund C T E using an equitable and transparent. Formula and to increase the funding for this program important to our schools, not economy. They're, they're stressing up above how important it is, and they talk about funding for transportation and equipment, uh, but they did delete that section and then, you know.
And I don't know if you remember, but a number of years ago, they put out an initiative to start, um, C T E programs in middle school at grade six. And there was not funding that went with that, so some districts were able to financially pick up and roll with that and others not, so I, I hear you on that, thinking that. Um, if they put this in and there's no supportive funds to go with it, it can be stressful for a system.
And I, I just liked those words, equitable and transparent, and they deleted those, but. They say, I mean, there's nothing I would hang my flag on, but they're just, the changes that are there.
Thank you for that.
Well, some of the stuff in the changes, EPS, they have EPS one, now they don't get their funding right from the senate schools, so they used to get it right from us, and if that doesn't happen anymore. I had a question about the, um. School choice.
Yep.
And they oppose a mandate into district choice, and I would think we agreed to that. We still have superintendent swaps if we have to do that, if they just give people choice. I think that would, uh. Hurt a lot of the rural schools for sure.
Right, right.
I've got, I've got a couple. About four point twenty five. Retire, talking about school board remote participation. They, they wanna strike that altogether, I think that's completely wrong. I think that should, should be the option for the school if they want to do remote access to board meetings.
Can, can you say?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm doing, on, uh, four point two five. I guess it must have been out of two.
Oh, I see.
To be.
Yes.
Oh, I see, one of whom they took out.
Yeah.
Believe it.
Yeah.
I agree, I, I think this, I think in this day and age, if we have the capacity to put it out there for people to watch wherever they are, whether or not they're traveling, or if they're home, or they can't. Access our, our building, you know, specifically, I, I agree with you.
Like, yeah, I, I think it needs to be, it's not, no.
That's right. Done it before, we've had to ask a board member. Just specifically was traveling and told them that they could not be part of the executive something.
Right.
You know, or you may be sick and be laid up for a while, but you can still participate.
Right.
You know, from hospital, that's right.
Yeah.
The other one. It's on, under the career, under C, two B, one G, the career opportunities. Where they're taking, they're, they're taking that completely out of there, all, all they're talking now is transportation and equipment. They're not talking about helping with any, yeah, and I agree on that, and I think that, I think that's wrong. I think that they should still be, you know, and you can all remember when, it wasn't that long ago that they were pushing us hard, they pushed hard last year. About middle school having C T E and stuff, well, if they want that, they need to fund it, this, this is getting to be a game now where we'll fund what we want to fund, but, that's not, that's all. No. Again, two B, three A. The, the ones that taken out professional status and, and development. Okay, but nowhere in here, in the two B, three A, it talks about. Doing something to help with instruction and doing something to help teachers, but it doesn't talk about any money. Again, they want us to pick up a tab on that, you know, I, I, I think, I think COVID not only had an influence on stat, on. Kids, I think it had a, a, a graph into, on, uh, teachers themselves, and I think that's what some of this is about, but they need to, they need to be putting some money in there upon that.
That was two B, three A.
Your last sentence there, Tom, um, says it to, uh, requires sustained devotion of time, effort, and financial resources to the continuing education of instructional staff. And like I said, again, not supportive, yeah.
And again, these are just resolutions for the S B A, it's not the state, the state has to agree, the legislature has.
Right, but I mean, we need to, you know, we need to make, and what we want, you'll see people down there that will get up and.
Oh, they will.
No.
And choose the bigger district.
The, um. The school choice thing, I, I'm. It's still up here on that whole thing, why, uh, why are we taking some of that out, but. I, I didn't know that apparently there are communities that you run by your party. You run by a Republican or a Democrat, I've never.
I've never heard, I, I didn't heard of that. A lot, a lot of people have been, just questioned, you know, what, what do you, you know, why is this even an issue we don't run on?
I don't understand that either.
In Ohio.
And the last one is the state funding to support students' mental and behavioral health. I'm a hundred percent behind that, but is there, is there gonna be money? You know, I, I know they say the, you know, within the EPS formula, you know, even minimal receivers, yeah, right, we don't know how that works.
And it says the legislature needs to dedicate additional funding, so still, there's a long fight ahead, it's been all of us. Thank you, um, others?
Shelley, you did say at one of our last meetings, they were looking at that rural. Um, like the point eight four that we have, have given everyone one percent of what this, you know, one full share.
Yeah.
So is that through the legislature? Or through the?
Or through the formula.
The form, so yeah, so right now, we get eighty four percent of what we should be getting.
Right, right.
And we're pulling against one point three two, hundred and thirty two percent.
Right. I attended a meeting with the D O E, um, I'm not sure if I mentioned it last time, with Paul and Ravel, yeah, and I mean, they, they really just don't understand, and I, I. I predict they're gonna keep on going round and round, um, probably right up until they give us our numbers in December, they really are, Paul, it's trying to really get. People to understand how one thing moves everything else, and, and that certainly is one piece.
And, and until they get the legislators to understand how EPS works.
That's right.
There's not gonna be any changes. They're still gonna go by. If you're a Portland, you're gonna get, like I say, one point three, three five, I think theirs is, um. You know, you get up into, uh. Thornton, Thornton Academy, uh. Scarborough. With this, one point five eight. How's that fair?
Right.
I mean.
And the ratios, because they have the school populations in rural districts, they don't lose anything for not having, you know.
Anyway, Kevin, there you go.
Okay, was that helpful?
Well, I think, I think it was to me, uh, the state funding part, I know that's something I can stress when we talk about it. Uh. And I, if it's not state funded, I think it might be a wise move on my part, not to vote for it, if they're not gonna commit to a funding. Anything that requires state funding, uh, do, do you guys agree on that?
Yes, ye- years ago, we used to get stuck with what they call ongoing mandates, which is where they made us.
Yeah, I understand.
And didn't.
You see, that could be a possibility in some of these.
Okay.
Okay, gotcha.
Has enough information?
I think I do.
All righty, thank you guys.
Thank you, all of you.
If they could help you.
Yeah, well, uh, I think so. This is next.
Grayson has gone to a field game in the.
Yeah, it's a minimal problem. While she's running down the field.
Right.
This one.
Okay.
Uh, discussing a mileage reimbursement rate.
All right, so at, um, our last meeting, um, Tom. Mentioned that, uh, there's been some movement in, in various areas on mileage rate. So I can't find mine, but. He might did some checking with folks, you know, okay, so committed some checking with folks, and so you can see. Okay, the state rate is point forty six, um, but you can see for yourself, um, what they are, and there's quite a, quite a range actually from forty four cents all the way to seventy five cents. Um, the po- this is according to policy, so the policy committee will certainly take into consideration anything that you folks want to add for, uh, comments or thoughts. Or if you want more information, do you want it more diverse, this group of people is pretty much like, you know, from right around our area. And is this, is this what you were thinking?
That, that's exactly what I'm thinking.
Okay.
You know, you look at Lincoln is sixty five, Dad is sixty five point five, Region Three is seventy five. I think we're doing the destruct, this, justice to our, our people. Uh, at forty seven. And I would like to see us act on it now, yeah, no, no way to hear, no way to come next budget.
I know, yeah, I don't, I don't think our staff should, when they go to travel to improve themselves, to go to workshops, I don't think they should be penalized by not being paid equitable with other people.
One thing that was kind of interesting out of this, things that we found, that there's a couple of school systems that don't pay mileage for workshops. If the school doesn't initiate the workshop, so say Shelley wanted to attend something on basket weaving, um, they don't. Support it unless you say, well, shall I really think our program could benefit from you attending that, so there is some of that out there too.
We, we had that problem here years ago, Kevin, you, you probably remember, when we used to have teachers that did that. Not so much with mileage, I remember it was more of classes, paying for classes, uh, to get the pilot's license, or to get, uh, basket weaving, or to get knitting, or to get.
Right.
And we, we changed that, so.
You had to get, you have to get permission.
You had to get permission.
Yeah.
You know, and even if we had to do something here with, with, with the mileage reimbursement, you know, it has to be okay, okay, travel.
That's right.
You know. But I, um, that's my feeling, I don't know how anybody else feels on it, I just. I think, you know, we always talk here, you know, that, that we, we, we wanna be equitable. And we should be, we're, we're a division of the town, and we should, we should be equitable to what their employees again. If they do it for their employees, then we should be doing it.
What did they get?
Sixty five point five.
And the federal rate is fifty eight five.
I don't think, I don't think whatever we do, we can do this year, I think we're gonna have to bold where we're at. And wait till we have to budget out next year.
It would be a bit of a challenge, um, for us to make a change, especially if we're talking twenty cents a mile to go. And to go up into the sixties.
I can remember when I first came on the board, we were below the state rate, and just to get to the state rate was. You know. I think it was like five to eight cents, something like that, and I was kind of amazed that. We're above state rate.
Where, where do you get, where are you getting the state rate, we're not above state rate.
State rate forty six.
Where did you get that?
Google, Google and, uh.
It went up, cuz it was forty four, just gone up to forty six.
Yeah.
I guess if you want me to, um, we, we can look to see like what some, like pre-approved, um. Expenses might add up to, kinda do some math, and come back with a little. Expenses might add up to, kinda do some math and come back with a little bit of that, like people who um Nick Collins goes to AD meetings. Um Jolene's going to Portland a couple of times, and we can kinda check out some of the ones that we know and give you what the difference would be. Um, if that would help. And then, of course, our next meeting with the policy committee is at the end of October, and we could um discuss it there further.
Well, at the very latest, we'd get an answer by uh. November.
Right.
We'd have a, a firm idea how much it would cost, and we'd a definite yea or nay, we'd take a vote.
Because the forty-four cents was there for a long time. And gas was under two dollars a gallon.
Right.
Now it's four dollars.
It's crazy.
It is, I, I don't disagree, yeah.
I think, what do you think about that, Tom? And I'd like to get it addressed as quick as we can.
Well, you know my stance, I think we ought to do it tonight, I think we ought to, we ought to make a move. If we don't go to sixty-five, what if we went to fifty? I think we ought to make some kind of effort. Now, I mean, we have other things that come before us that we don't have budgeted, we don't, we know that the monies aren't there, but. But the money is there, we find it. That's just my feelings. I just want everybody to know how I, how I feel, but. I'm willing to go with it. We're aboard, whatever we decide, and that's what the label go.
And you, you think, Shelley, you can give it, uh Dr. Lane, you can give us a, a pretty good figure of what it's gonna cost?
I can, I can really look through particularly everything that we have already requested. And look through like the second half of the year on what happened last year to see where people are, some of them are fairly predictable, um. So I could give you a good estimate.
Okay.
You should be able to shake the budget, right, whether it's budget for travel, total amount, times point two oh, one point two oh. That'll give you a total, right?
That's true, that, yeah, that'd be a much slicker way to do it, good thinking. Yep. So current amount budgeted.
As whatever, if you went to the sixty-five, probably one point three or whatever it is.
Well, I don't, I do that and send you guys an email and um that would at least allow it to be. We could still address it at our meeting and.
Cause I'm like, Tom, I, I really don't wanna see a drag on.
Yeah.
But if we can get a, a, a good ballpark estimate.
Yeah.
By the next meeting and ha- and make it up and on the agenda, then we're gonna have a vote.
Yeah.
I, I would.
Yeah, I didn't think of it, the way you said it's much easier.
It's a lot easier.
Half a dozen lines of news and that, so, yeah, we can handle that.
I mean, and then, and then you're gonna be off a little bit because so it's already happened.
Correct.
Okay, but.
Yeah.
Just give you an idea or anything.
Just not making a retro, just it's happened.
No, 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 no.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, cause we're already.
We're already into it.
Through the.
We're halfway through it.
A quarter through it.
No, we're almost half.
Half isn't until January. July, right?
Yeah.
Did we all settle with that? I understand the student representative is all over the field trying to zoom in.
Is she really?
She's running with her laptop.
Grace does have her report in for you.
Okay, I'm in the strange. What?
Look at this, Louie, you're first and you was here for a thing like, I'm just doing it, it's gonna come through.
We stood afraid.
So last week, we uh finally completed the second elevator organization project, which is uh been a two-month plus ongoing. Endeavor here, um. So both elevators are done, completely renovated, all new control pumps and. Wiring and pretty much everything that's uh electrical that it takes to make the elevator run, the, the cabs and everything stay the same. But we're all retrofitted with new buttons and there's more key switches on these new ones that uh. And a special key cabinet, just to, just to keep track of all of what all these things do, um it's got some cool features where if somebody gets trapped in it. They just push a button and it automatically calls Otis and Otis will get a hold of. Uh proper people that help get somebody out, um fire suppression, fire alarm. Uh system was had to be put in, bring it up to code, that was done and fortunately we were still in doing the install of our. Fire alarm system, so kind of worked out, but I think we saved a little bit. There, having the guys already onsite uh doing that, so we now have two elevators with. Up to code, fire protection, um. So one elevator is back in service, the one that goes to the second floor, the uh other elevator. Was not able to be put back into service because it was not inspectable in the spring when we had our elevators inspected. That elevator had been shut down because it had totally been kaput.
Yeah.
So even though it is brand new, just like the other one, that technicality of it didn't get a spring inspection does not allow it to be. Put back into service until the state uh inspector comes and does his thing, so bit of an unfortunate technicality, but. It is what it is, um we are waiting now just on the state inspector to come, it's about a month or so out, um. So as soon as he comes, does his thing, and hopefully we can get the second one fired up and back in service.
Yes, so we will help you down under the earth.
All of that was done, yeah, under ESSER funds, yeah, great, uh great project, and we jumped on it at the right time. Because it got really expensive shortly thereafter, so. Yeah, we were fortunate, we were fortunate to get locked in when we did. Um we also saw the completion of the heating, heating project that we started since school ended last year, that's been ongoing all summer. And last week, uh especially last Wednesday, Cory's finished the last. Valve and we're doing the programming, so that gives us complete digital controls, essentially from everywhere in the world. That I might be, I can log in, control the heat, control the buildings, control the uh. Pumps and the motors and, and uh and get all the alarms for, for things, so it allows us to know what's going on and. Address problems really before they happen in a lot of cases.
I'm really not sure why he did this because I don't think he's thought of it yet, but he now will never truly be on vacation.
Now.
We don't have IA, we have LD, right?
Yeah.
Uh that was also done on maybe the S three.
That was also, uh actually, no, we funded that project a year ago on through the, cause we had over budgeted, our fuel bid came in lower. Than expected, and that year we had electricity savings, so we funded that through those two things. Um. So that was another big project, and these have been big projects that everything outside of what the companies do. All the additional wiring, phone line wiring and conduit runs and the computer cabling and all of that. I had to pick up the slack and do, um. So it's been a busy few months with those projects, um certainly, I'll breathe a little bit easier now that those are, are done, um. Josh and I really did the backboards installed at Granite Street last week, that's a big improvement over there, um. Looks a lot better.
Been years in cut.
Yes, definitely, um we are also, we partnered with Arcata and they did a fundraiser to install two more backboards. On the court, um and as well as they were raising money for some swings, and I think they're pretty close to have not have already reached their. Their goal, um so I've gotta get in touch with Shelley to see where we stand with that, so we should be adding two more. Lower backboards put on, on the sides of the court, um for the younger kids, um unfortunately, what typically happens with that is the big kids then. Destroy them because that's where they go slam, dumb, boom, bah, um. So yeah, that will be coming probably in the spring this point, um. And if you notice, we, we did get the bleachers torn down on the football field, the old set of bleachers that were a, a danger, um. And I think the day before the game, got everything hauled out of the first game, got everything hauled out there and. Fortunately, Lily donated uh their big set of bleachers off their field over there, so that was a tremendous help to us, um you know. Thousands of dollars worth of bleachers there for the visiting side. Uh and I have seen them full, so that's been a, been a good, good addition with railings and, you know, bleachers that are safe enough to code, so. That was a, a bit of a win for us to, to get that and not have to put anything back there ourselves. So those are the big things, then the fire alarm, like I said, that's still in progress, that's um. Pretty much done, but we've had some glitches marrying some of the old equipment and the new equipment. Um but we've added a voice evacuation system to the new uh panel, so in the office they can either push a button and say if it were a. It, it, it voice activates and directs people what to do in different scenarios, or you can get on an intercom and. Put it out to the gym, the auditorium, uh giving instruction what to do, not only in a fire, but another type of emergency as well, so. That brings our gathering spaces up to code as well and uh. Not too sad to see the completion of another big project, so. It's been a lot going on the last few months for sure. Any questions?
So we put voice activation throughout the whole school.
Voice activation by code is required for the auditorium, see over four hundred.
Over four hundred now.
Yeah, so it was the auditorium and the gym. Our hope or goal would be part of the, one of the ESSER projects that we have, and we haven't started because of the ESSER rewrite and all of that. Is a new intercom system for Sterns, our intercom system is like thirty-five years old and is. Not trustworthy, um so if we did put a new intercom system in. I did talk with the, these people about tying that in, so we would have it all over the entire building, which would be the ideal scenario.
Yeah. Good, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
I do.
Uh.
Only. What else?
Nothing, I'm just, it's been a long day, it's a busy day. So, um, October child cap is ready to be finalized by myself and then I'll give that to um Dr. Lane. She will finalize that, that is our whole number as of October first, how many specialized students we have. And their percentages and their disabilities, and that is used to help with funding. Um we've done, thanks to Louie getting the elevators fixed, um Jen John drove. Moved her entire classroom to be lower level. Um so that she could educate all of our students and she has now been moved back up status again, so. That was her volunteering to do that once again. And, um. Oh, we now have a new toileting protocol at Granite Street. Um I went over last, last week for three days. And met with um Ed Tex, talked to them, you know, who was comfortable, who wasn't, what the procedures are, we have a documentate. Documentation now for each student, so they can um. Do, you know, record the information, so if anything ever happens, we have a lot for that. So, and meetings are happening right away. Any questions?
Thank you. Ms. Mary?
Um, I said, grant and call up to date and submitted and ready to go, um. We worked very hard on that information. And we've identified that our math and reading programs and other lines of standards, and there's lots of gaps, and the teachers have been doing a great job of finding. Resources on their own to supplement some of those gaps. We also found that fifty-two percent of our students have been absent seventeen more days, eight last year, and eighty percent of our students are absent. Between ten and sixteen days, so that's, that's another big area that we need to. Address and it's a national trend that we need as well. We spent some time with Kate Greeley from the Maine Math and Science Alliance, and she's coming back in October and December, and that's been paid by the six friends. And that's gonna pretty much take up the money that we have. Um and we should be looking to see if we get more money and if we're still aiming to create school in January. And what you have there is the results from the May through the year assessment that was done in spring. And the first page is from grade three. And the school was, their median score was fifteen oh nine and the state score was fifteen oh five. So we was actually a little bit above what the state expected in math. And their grade reading, the school was at fifteen oh one and the state was at fifteen oh four. We um just got these results at the end of last week and was able to watch a webinar together Friday, that kind of helped us understand what these numbers. Then I'm fourth grade. The school is fifteen oh three and the state is fifteen oh two for math. And for reading was fifteen oh six, and that's what the state was well. And then grade five, the math, our school is fourteen ninety-seven and the region and state is fifteen hundred. And for reading, the school was fifteen fourteen and the state was fifteen oh nine. So it's pretty amazing how well the students did on this first path that. It was quite challenging, um I mean, I sat by some of the students that took it last year to my whole district and. Um people were feeling a little unsettled by it because it was a lot different from the NWA's that the students had been taking the last few years. But this really showed that the, that students came and, and gave their best effort and did really well.
And I got one, yeah, this, this red is light green and blue, is this actually our students?
Yes, so for the first one.
We had two students that were well below.
Yes. And. We get back to. We had two students, and I like they did it by student numbers, not by um percentages, because we didn't have a small, we're on a school like ours. Yeah, there was two well below, there was two that was below seventeen, that was at. And two that was above for that grade three math, so that's what those three, those breaths. And we could also look at individual students and identify which ones and um. Most of them were children who had a disability and had accommodations on the task site, still, they were. Uh when we looked at the special ed and I don't think I've shaded, it's usually seventy-five percent of our special ed students were in the yellow, so that's still. Really, really good.
What test did you say they, this was based on?
It's May through the year assessment, it's the new main state assessment that they started last spring.
It's different than what the old MEAs would have been.
It's similar to like the old MEAs and the smarter balance test that they used to take, yes.
Okay.
And we're in the process of doing this, the fall ones right now, we'll start tomorrow at Grand and University.
I noticed the numbers don't match up with our enrollment. There's some kids that didn't take the test or.
Well, that was from last year, that was last spring.
October, oh, from last spring, okay.
Yeah. And so this we just barely got because they were doing a lot of um deter- determining what they were putting at state standards where this is a brand new technique. And the test that we're taking now was supposed to get results within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, so by that school board meeting, we could have the results and. The fall will be in the year. And this will help us determine about this, our this level of.
And it's a real asset to our teaching staff to know the results much quicker. Because then they can, that can help drive instruction, where now we're looking at like old data, is it, is it good, does it have some? Level of contribution, sure, but if current teachers are testing and get results. They can drive that right into whatever lanes kids need for each of these topics, so there's some real value in having that data. Um much, much sooner.
Used to take a long time to get your MEAs back and things, it wasn't, it really made it hard to help. Generate.
It kind of was used more as a high stakes, like school identification. Where now it's supposed to be more towards um driving education, um so that the, the students have a productive year. The timing's much better, you give the test in the fall, teachers can plot their path based on the class that they have.
What was interesting too, uh this is at the overall for each grade level, but you can go into each student. And you can look at which questions they got wrong and which questions they got right. And it breaks it down into different categories for the math and the reading, and it will also tell you whether it's a, what they concern, easy, a medium or a hard question. So you can do a lot of analysis with that.
I wanted to mention too, um you mentioned about like just the enrollment numbers like looking different, but. Also, we should add that at Sterns, I can't say so, but granted, but at Sterns. We only tested about sixty percent of the kids last year, and so Nick and Beth actually put together a plan. So that our students, you know, are tested, like the whole point is for a state test is to have the kids tested. So any student who had a legitimate reason not to be tested, any family that had a legitimate reason not to want their children tested. They just had to make an appointment with our. Not to want their children tested, they just had to make an appointment with our admin team in the office and come in and have that discussion. So as of right now, we've only got two students. Two students who are not taking um the Sterns level test, so that's an incredible, incredible change from last year. Which honestly should give us a better sense on what Sterns looks like as a school system. With granite, I'm talking about driving instruction and not that they won't do that here at Sterns, but here, like it will give us a better grip on. How our students are doing with the more rigorous curriculum that they will then leave um for whatever path they're going to take, so. It's a, I think it's great that they're doing it in the fall.
It's amazing how this correlates with adults. Because math, there's very few. Adults that are basic skills deficient in math.
Yeah.
Um, especially the older people who have been out of it for a long, long time.
Right, and you see that.
I see that, that it does happen a lot, reading, almost everyone is uh at grade, you know. High school graduate level, but math, some are in fourth or fifth grade, and it's, it's amazing, really.
So I would think that everybody sitting here would be pleased if the through the year will be successful. As administrating, as uh uh to administer it and for us to use the results and not change again. So as Ms. Mary just said, we had smarter balance and then we've had N W A's and we've had M E As, like they need to like find a platform, keep with it. So that we can, you know, move forward with some of the choices that we'll make as a school system too.
And we do have two students that agree that they're not.
You did, I I didn't know that, yeah.
Yeah, for, for different reasons.
Did we have any, did we have any issues with? The technology holding people back, um that used to be a big problem.
The technology has been a struggle, I was at the Pinquis superintendent's meeting last week and some other school systems have already got their testing underway. And it was horrible, the stories that they were talking about, um and then you call for assistance and it was, well, put your laptop back to. Like its original status and they're like, no, we're not putting our laptop back, so then they went and like configured thirty two computers and they. Put this lab of computers, you know, throughout the school system, so they run across a lot of technical issues and we and both schools have run across some technical issues. Which, you know, they've been able to overcome, but I have to say, if we're working on building up students to desiring to do their best and we're working on helping. Teachers understand that this tool helps you as you move forward, to have the platform put out by the, the testing system. Be wonky, for lack of a better word, is really discouraging to people who are ready to go and do their best. Sorry.
Well, this is a brand new test, right?
Yeah.
So we're look, and we're comparing it to other now in Maine. Have we, where did we adopt this from, is this a, a regional test that they've been using, is this a national, or is this a new one across the board?
What they did was they took the N W A, which was a national test that a lot of schools have been over a long time, but then they. Um, changed to match Maine standards. So this is unique just to Maine, but it's tied into the N W A, but it's very different from the N W A.
I'm glad to see that we're finally doing something. I think that, you know, that got thrown on the back burner, just lack. So, and thank you very much.
And isn't it?
Getting that moving ahead to what we should be.
Isn't it encouraging actually to see these charts too from spring, like, I mean, like, that when did you really see that and get a chance to look at it?
And that's.
Sorry, yeah, I I thought that was really nice, I was glad that she provided that.
We kind of wanted what data was being done. Because we never, we never saw anything.
Right.
Oh, we can just move forward.
One other quick thing, the uh Granite Street design you put out, or was put out by the, this classics in the teachers, that was excellent. I enjoyed that very much.
Well, that's actually do that every month.
It was, it was nice.
A lot in it.
Yeah.
It was very nice, very interesting.
So I have some three year testing also on my agenda and I just. I think Ms. Mary covered it very well, explaining what's going on and why that test and probably why you're hearing that term. Through your testing for, you know, just recently or for the first time maybe, um. But we have started here, so again with um. Ms. Mary, I hope to be able to bring you some of our test results at the next board meeting. Um, and we'll take a look at that, so another topic I wanted to touch base on is curriculum. We have been doing a great deal of work with curriculum on our early release days, our workshop day on Friday. Heather Gersa has done some trainings, she also, I'm not sure if all of you know this, but she also goes with Doctorick. And curriculum is her passion. So she has set up the timeline to go throughout the year and work with teachers individually. In groups depending on subjects and also vertically. So connecting from grade to grade, we're very excited about all of the work that they're doing so far and. Um, they'll do a lot during the course of the year, so I just wanted to let you guys know what was going on and let the public know. Mentor training, again, Heather Gersa decided that she has always loved being a mentor, so she went to one of the. Train the trainer um conferences this summer and she is running a mentor training program. With our teachers, so our more veteran teachers can work with her and be trained to be a mentor to. New teachers, so either, you know, first year teachers or teachers who are new to this district. And she ran her first with anyone that was interested. And I believe she said she had sixteen teachers show up, so, that's awesome. That just shows the kind of staff that we have, they're always willing to jump in and to help. Veterans Day celebration, so we were looking at um November seventh as the, as the day for having Veterans Day. Separation and that's the day for voting, so. The Veterans Day celebration will be on November ninth, that's Thursday. And it will be held in the morning, we'll have more details soon, we've been working on that and Cherry Given is. Helping to organize the whole thing again. Um, the National Honor Society students will be helping to prepare and serve breakfast for the veterans. The Student Council helps provide funds and um ingredients and. Organization of all of that, so the banding course will also be participating during that event. Many, many, many of our students become involved in this, and I think at the heart of it, that's what's most important. The students meet the veterans, they sit down over breakfast with them, they speak to them, um Granite Street comes over and joins us, um. It's, it's always been a really good event. It helps with um reaching out to our community and having our students see a real life. Something I wanted to highlight this month was our outdoor education program, which you all heard about. From the middle school perspective and we now do that and have extended it into high school. Hannah Bloom is running that program and she is doing a fantastic job, so she is working in conjunction. With the year program through the library, through the town library. And they're learning some bike maintenance, they're, they're learning um trail maintenance. But in the outdoor ed piece of it, so far she says that they have talked about risks and hazard analysis. Um, and paddle sports, so they have gone uh kayaking. And paddle boarding, yeah, Melanoc Extreme and Jerry Pond, so I hope that you guys received the picture. That I sent of a class that was out paddle boarding around Jerry Pond, I went up and joined them. They were wonderful and I was really shocked to hear that a couple of them. This was only the second time paddle boarding with outdoor ed and a couple of them told me I'd never been on paddle boards before. And having gone up to watch them, you would never have known, they were paddling all over the place and. Talking and laughing and joking and it was great. They were really enjoying themselves, so they're hoping to go mountain biking, whether depending for the next few weeks. Then they'll go on to snow shoeing. Um, they'll be looking at trails and what trail condition should look like. There'll be um navigation and orienteering for map reading. They will be learning how to fire start and do outdoor cooking. Shelter building. They also learn all year long about leave no trace. Um. Let's see, I seem to be saying um a lot, I apologize. It has been a busy day, um, yeah, see, there goes again, so they have to have the opportunity to go whitewater rafting. Through the Northern Maine Outdoor Ed cohort. And it's not certain about learning about going to the wet water and paddling and. So that's something that they're looking in as a possibility. So the trails, bikes and gears so far, they have been using groups and stakeholders. Learning the types of trails and the differences, they're learning parts of trails and the vocabulary involved. Um, they are creating a profile of the local trails. So, let me see. They're doing the three pillars of sustainable trails, trail specs, um measurements. Students are measuring slope, grade and spacing of grade. Spacing of grade reversal for the trails behind the high school. So they're also looking at trail tools and trail safety. And planned for the end of the year, they will move to hands-on trail building and maintenance activities. Bike maintenance skills, so they're actually going to, we hope to bring some of the gear library stuff here. And have the students actually working on bike maintenance right here at school. Um, men- winter trail maintenance, trail design, and then they'll be doing some group and small group projects. It is there, it's amazing, it's amazing, it was great to go up there and watch the kids, they're having an awesome time. And um Mrs. Bloom was out there. I don't think any of them could keep up with Mrs. Bloom, uh I don't, I'm sure all of you know, she's into, into a lot of. Outdoor activities, including marathons and running and so. She was all over the place with them and they were all doing a great job.
Would a lot of this stuff be done during the work period that they have, like if if. They got the Viking part over here to work on them?
It could be, but this is also, this is one of the new electives that we put in, so they have last time scheduled in the day where they do this. So the last, the last block of the day, the last period of the day, they, they went up to Jerry Pond and went paddle boarding.
I think that's great.
Yeah, they're getting a credit for it as an elective.
What class, was it, what? What classes were it, junior, senior, or all?
I think the class that I watched was mostly juniors and seniors.
Cause I could, I'm hearing your talk, you could see ways that could be tied into education, so. Without them even knowing it, you know, that's, that's what, it kind of makes it a dream.
Yes, yes, and. We live in Maine, we live in Northern Maine, so a lot of our students are outdoor kids. And if that is the best way for them to learn, then I'm really pleased that we can offer this opportunity with people that are certified. And they understand what they're doing and they bring in outside groups that are also the same, so it's done safely and it's done effectively.
Sounds good.
I think it takes academic and bring some revelry, relevance to it.
Yes. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
All right, we're very welcome.
Yeah, right. Um, so just I'll highlight a few things here, um I think we mentioned before that we're working on um tightening things up in our. System uh hold secure lockdown and um evacuated shelter will eventually just become like fire drill, something that's just um stuck in nature. Um, Matt Seer is kind of leading the charge, the pit is um set of skills and he and I went to um. East Melanocet P D last week and had a meeting with them to um kind of continue to move forward our efforts for coordination, so that should we ever. Need somebody um here on site, though, we kind of learned about how quickly that will happen or or where we, how we get that initiated. Um, our auditors from H R H were here in the building this Wednesday and Thursday. Um, it's a long process, so you won't have any, you know, real definitive information from that for a while. Uh, this is the typical way, they come here on site, do a lot of testing, um make lists of information that they want and then they go back. And um we're not their only client, so sometimes it takes a lot, quite a while for us to um hear how that is all going. Um, I went to a region three meeting um last week, uh the culinary students cooked us an absolutely delicious meal. It was interesting to see what programs they're um adding and taking away and where our kids fall in um interest levels. Um, Maine is piloting a um a program to prevent homelessness. And I was talking with Katie D who manages this for us and they're going to give us, already have seven hundred and fifty dollars. To help prevent homelessness, so if anybody here has any idea how seven hundred and fifty dollars can help Katie. In our schools prevent homelessness with that, you let us know, because she and I are both puzzled on how we will do that. Um, is it a good idea, is it a good initiative, sure, it's federal money, they're funneling it through, um it just seems like it's um. Would be a challenge for us to make sure they have an impact, but we have it, Katie's got it and we'll use it wisely, I'm sure. Um, in the Pinquis meeting I had last week, um the commissioner, commissioner and deputy commissioner are both there and they were talking about. Um, student transfers and the fact that they, if you remember right, if you've been, you know, listening for a few years, it, the pendulum swings. Where everybody who puts in a transfer gets a transfer and then it swings back, where everybody who puts in a, a transfer is denied. Well, we're in a time when they're getting denied and superintendents are agreeing with each other on it. But now the pendulum is going like a third wing over and they're going to the State Board of Education and saying, you know. Clearing their case, telling their details, and a lot of them are overwhelmingly getting overturned. So that's creating, it's like, it's like we're in the third column here where the school board, state school board is overturning. Something that the local superintendents have agreed to, so they were, they were just kind of highlighting the fact that. This pendulum has been going back and forth for a long time, but now we have this new element. So they're recommending that if we have somebody that we've denied and we've talked with, you know, we're in agreement with the other superintendent. That we actually physically leave our buildings and go to this meeting um in Augusta, so. And just giving you a heads up, we don't have that situation, um but it just was new information and. I've done this for quite a while and I can't say that I know hardly anybody that's ever gone to the state school board, um but I thought that was interesting information to share.
Sounds like it's more all reached by the state.
Okay, um the next piece, uh um the E P S program, I think we've already talked about that a little bit too. Um, that there needs to be a lot of education to our, for our legislators before they can make any um substantial change that really will affect. On education, and then I also wanted to add these couple of pieces, um we have a um Sandy Booker. Today is at a wellness training, um so we're excited to get that program going when she comes back with um some ideas. And then next week we have three people going out for a um diabetic training, so that more people on staff. Have an understanding of uh, you know, not only the numbers, but what carbs are and what we do for kids who have highs and have lows and how we assess. Um, so we've got three people going for that and considering we are rural, it is nice to have people on staff and if we're gonna go outdoors, like the ladies have suggested. With outdoor ed, it's better that more people have some understanding of what some of those concepts look like. Um, couple other things, Louis is thrilled to hear that the main school um facilities inventory project is being supported by. The D O E, the D O E has received six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, a hundred percent federally funded. In order to new individual building inventories and then they will give us a profile of our buildings. There are a hundred data points and they have. There are a hundred data points and they have already started the process and I've talked, I talked to Louie twice like, okay, well, uh. We'll hold them off for a little bit while at least, you know, everybody is here in the building so that we can do this. Um, but that's coming, I'm not sure to what nail, because I'm not sure like how that's going to help us. If you have a Louie in your system, you probably know those hundred data points and we know where we're at. I will say I've worked in systems that probably will struggle to come up with answers for those hundred data points. But how that will be advantage to us as Sterns and Granite, I'm not sure because we have a Louie. I just thought you might want to know that that's how fair. Um, we have a new um student, a seventeen year old girl, I'm coming to, through Jump the World. She is joining us on October sixteenth, so next week she'll be here through December seventh. And that program is called Jump Start, so she gets to take one of her semesters. And join us from Guatemala here in Melanocket, experience what happens here in October, November and part of December. So we're really pleased to be able to invite her to that.
Buy her a coat.
Yeah, from Guatemala, that's right, that's right. Um, I already told you about the, um, no, I guess I didn't say this. Did I mention to you guys last time that the E T B cards that were related to the pandemic, the P dash E B T cards? Were ending, did I mention that last time? Okay, so that's money that are given to school age children who um. The state by qualifications had said that their families need some um financial support for food. So when the pandemic hit, all of those kids were identified for extra funding. So the end of that funding is, has just gone by, actually it's um October fifteenth. So it's just, just, or just coming up, I guess. So the reason to mention it is that um. The money went on the E T B cards and then some letters went out and a lot of the population didn't know this was happening. And now this means that some of these families who have come to rely on some of these funds, it's going away. Because pandemic money in general is going away. So this was one that caught people by surprise and um I got this information at the superintendent's meeting as well because. Parents were coming in with, you know, like what is this, what's happening? And it doesn't have anything to do with, with identification from the school. Doesn't have anything to do with free and reduced one, it's a program outside of this that um related to pandemic money and it's going away. Um, are we talking about the homeless stuff? Promise I'm almost done. Um. The Kenny Vento. I think that's it. I think that's it. Any questions on any of that? And I kind of rattles a lot of information. There's a, there's a lot happening um with. The pandemic money um affecting many, many programs now and there's also, as you can see with the mid Kenny Vento, like they're trying to. Put money out in different ways in order to support some of the families that will be having struggles um as it. As the money changes, so. Oh, I did have one more thing. We are sixteen percent. Our funds are sixteen percent expended and we're fourteen percent through our school year. So we're doing. We're doing. Yeah, we're two percent over, but we had all of those startup.
Well, that's be a mileage.
Yeah.
And that's what I have.
Does anybody have anything else?
Um, I just wanted to mention how nice it is to, to have the principal from the high school. The principal from Granite Street come here and tell us the good things that are happening. I add something. And uh, should be to the public too. And that's sincere, guys.
I know.
It really is.
I appreciate that.
Upcoming meeting is November seventh. Good luck to everybody who's running. Uh. Seeing nothing else, folks, do a journey.
Thank you, everybody.
I, well, I don't have that.